Plan B, we'll also have a lot of facility interaction with it, potentially. Now, it depends upon what the rest of the board feels about this, but the wolves closest to our sled, okay? Warrington Middle School, the Department of Education, the future of what's going to happen in Escambia County when it comes to performance in our middle schools based upon decisions that we are having to take and make. And so, thought has gone into this and needs to be shared with everyone at this dais and in the room, and staff, and everyone else. And there's been some conversations on the way to Tallahassee and back. And so, we talked, if indeed, Warrington Middle School would be closed. We would, and then, within a year, we would have the opportunity to reopen it. I would propose that we reopened it as a magnet school, either a 6'8" or K8, focused on workforce development, but also more focused as a pre-West Florida high school. So that the academies that would be in there for 6th, 7th, and 8th graders would have the rigor and the interest of the students who would then want to go into any of the other career academies and any of the high schools, but mainly for West Florida High School. The reason I say that, if you're going to have a magnet, you need to have something that's going to actually draw students and parents in. Parents almost fight over the ability to have their children in the lottery for seats into West Florida at this point. If we had a pre-West Florida program at Warrington Middle School site, and I'm saying "site" because the name could be changed, the Chappy James Workforce Academy for K8, 6'8", what have you. The concept is that the parents and students who would successfully complete grades 6, 7, and 8 in an academy, or academies, the exposure, earn their certifications, have expectations for behavior, academics, and attendance, that we could, as a board, adjust or change our policies on entrance into West Florida by saying, "The top 50 or top 100 students who go through this academy at the middle school level will not have to go through a lottery, but will automatically get into West Florida High School." I think the magnetism for parents for that program, to get into that and have the ability to have students enter into West Florida without having to rely on the lottery, would be very magnetic. I say that as just a concept. I know we have a lot to talk about. I know that there are decisions that are going to be made, and I was reminded of the Serenity Prayer, you know? The courage to accept the things that I have to, the knowledge to know the difference in which ones, and knowing that we don't have complete control over our future at this point. And so, things over the next few days will work into this. If that doesn't happen, our other thing that we need to do is we need to look at our competition. I made a statement here before, saying that charter schools, private schools, parochial schools are not our enemies. They are our competition. When you have good competition, it makes you better. And we need to compete on the same field. And I would propose that we move forward with a number of K8 schools, specifically to address in District 2 and District 1, the situations that we have going on at Warrington Middle School and at Bellevue Middle School. And hopefully, we will not be creating additional problems with Bailey and Workman, but that could happen. Knowing that, using a K8 model would diffuse the number of students who would be zoned into Warrington Middle School into, and this is just hypothetical, but it's the concept, it's the idea that the superintendent, the staff, the people who have to put the plan together with input from the board and/or direction from the board would say, "At this very moment, Navy Point Elementary and Warrington Elementary could be a K8 next August, with a pre-K through 4 at one site, and a 5 through 8, or 4 through 8 at the other. The capacity is there. They already have capacity in those buildings to do that. West Pensacola has the ability to have a new cafeteria and kitchen built within a year, turn the existing cafeteria and kitchen into classrooms, and it would be a K8, taking half the kids, or a large number of the students, a large number, because they're 11 feeder schools into Warrington Middle School. But the majority are going to come from West Pensacola, Warrington, Navy Point, Mertle Grove, and Sherwood. But having West Pensacola geographically where it is, becoming a K8 would relieve a goodly number. Turning, so you would have two K8s, you could assume that the 600 who are, or 540 that are currently attending into those. The thing that happens, and I'm going to go a little bit tangential at the moment, parents in the K8s don't leave. They stay involved. The students stay. Hypothetically, if Suter, Cordova Park, and Scenic Heights were K8s, there would be no competition. Those parents would stay in those schools, by God.
Yeah.
They would, they would stay, okay? But if we're going to compete, you know, with the people who now with Senate Bill 1, or House Bill 1, if they're going to be universal vouchers, if we're not going to do things with our instructional programs and how we organize to entice parents, to make us their choice, the public, Escambia County Public Schools should be the choice of the parents. They should say, "Why would I look elsewhere? I am very happy with my child staying in this site." And I think we have other opportunities. Only because I had to deliver a car seat there this morning, and had a real quick discussion with the principal, Home Elementary could start assuming next year, 6th grade, the year after 7th grade, the year after 8th grade, and has the capacity because of the lack of enrollment. Now, we've had, Mr. St. Seer will attest, a decline in the number of students who have attended Escambia County Public Schools. We have capacities in buildings. What will happen in the future with other middle schools? Again, this is all hypothetical. Please, people, don't go and say, "Fedsco said you're going to do..." No. Hypothetically, if we had other K8s on the northeast side of town, Workman Middle School could be the middle school magnet for the arts, giving the students at NB Cook a place to feed into.
Right.
Okay? Again, this is a big change. These are different ideas. But we have to compete academically. We already know that a K8 model, which is why the charters want K8s, is because there are additional sales in the grading configuration, and the ability to obtain a C is more likely. If we're going to continue to divide and do things that are not going to encourage parents to stay in the public schools, make sure students get the education they need by staying in the public schools, by being fluid enough and flexible enough to meet the needs, and be enticing enough. So, this would be a reconfiguration of many places. It would change the things that we're going to go on with facilities, potentially, and it would have to make us stop and rethink, what is the plan not for tomorrow? What is the plan for five years from now and 10 years from now, so that we are not left behind when House Bill 1, Senate Bill 1, whichever one it was, really kicks into high gear, and private schools and charter schools are able to open up and be open for four years, and then accept anyone from anywhere? If we do not take some drastic steps to do the things to make our schools the schools of choice, then we are failing this district and the parents and the students, in my opinion. Now, again, I bring this forward because there are so many things on the table. And I believe that we have people viewing this meeting from Tallahassee to Tampa, who could say, "You know what? Escambia County does have a plan, a Plan B, on how we can better serve our students ourself. How we can make it meaningful, how we can make it enticing, and how we will assure that our students are successful academically, socially, emotionally." The research on the K8 goes on and on. All we have to do is take one step across the county line and see that every new school built in Santa Rosa is a K8. And there's a reason for it. Statewide, that is the trend. Now, I'm not saying we follow every trend that we see, but I'm saying that in this regard, if we're going to do and have a model that's going to be better for our students and their success academically, that's the model that we need to explore, and we need to do it as quickly as possible.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I agree with you all the way. I would be very supportive of a K8 magnet school at Warrington. I think we need to give a reason for the community of Warrington, the choice back into the community, or you might say voucher back into the community. I gave that example in the press and stuff, renaming it, because I'm real worried about Warrington Elementary with that name, because the Board of Education kind of goes by names. They see the name, same name all the time, but I thought it'd be great, Warrington is the name came from one of the Navy pilots, early Navy pilots, but that's why I suggested General Chappy James. And at that time, and this is stuff for staff to work on down the road on how, I had talked to Skipper Martin about this with them partnering with the IT engineering, making a STEM-based school. Corey Field was going to be partnered in with it. But there's all kind of great ideals, but I think the citizens of Escambia County need to know that we got a Plan B if Warrington closes, that will take a year to upgrade that facility, staff get a plan, and have a K8. So, it will have that golden nugget in Warrington to revitalize the community and give a chance. It's, choices here, and we do need to compete. So, I agree with you on the K8 model for that facility.
And I was going to mention one more thing. You are right, Longleaf is, would be a perfect place for a K8, from my area to Leaf, Bellevue.
Longleaf is a K8, and Bellevue Elementary and Middle as a K8.
Yes, yes.
Again, having fewer numbers at that middle school age in those sites, the research when Melino Park was built as a K8, but never formulated as a K8, the research showed, students going to a K8 school are 11% more likely to not just go to, but to graduate from college, okay? Students from a K8, their social maturation is slowed. It is, they do not, students do not socially mature quickly. They don't jump into that teenage persona. They'll stay children longer in a K8. Parents do not disengage from their students when they enter those schools. They stay involved from kindergarten through 8th grade.
PTAs.
PTAs, but then the faculty, faculty knows the students, knows the parents, knows the needs, and has them a longer time to make those differences. There was a whole white paper done on why Melino Park was billed as a K8, and it was ignored at the time. But at this point, I want to say that, and I'm going to stop interrupting because other board members, Mr. Williams.
Yes, and as I mentioned in the last board meeting, that I was in favor of a magnet school, but I'm not in favor of it being a magnet school that feeds West Florida. West Florida enrollment has surpassed Pensacola High School enrollment. And Pensacola High School, Warrington is one of the feeder schools for Pensacola High School. Right now, I think Pensacola High School's staff, that may be 1,250, it's 1,270, never been that low before. There are some things that need to be done to make sure that we have that enrollment become stable, such as redistricting. If you take away all of the special programs, and I'm speaking with Pensacola High School, you left with maybe 900 zone kids. You take away the IB program. So, I'm for the magnet school, I'm for that, but I would love to see we have a model that we try that, I think, at Workman, that probably can be reestablished at Warrington, where it can be a middle school IB program. And it can be, it can feed into Pensacola High School.
We tried that with Woodham, or Workman, rather, as a pre-IB, but the other part about it, even if there were enrollment into West Florida, you would decrease the number of lottery slots available. It wouldn't necessarily increase the enrollment at West Florida High School.
It would hurt, it would hurt the enrollment at Pensacola High School, because we receive some, Pensacola High School receives students from Warrington area.
And still would, if only a limited number were going in there. The students who didn't go and didn't achieve the disciplined academics.
But I think what you're saying, the students that went to that magnet school would be assured enrollment in too.
The ones who finish with their attendance, grade point average, certifications, and other academics meet a criteria that would be set, a limited number would do that, to offset.
But your reason for doing that is to draw more people to the Warrington area, to the magnet school.
To the magnet school.
But is there a need for West Florida to have a feeder school?
I don't know if there's a need, but I think that it is one thing that would entice parents to have their children attend there.
But Pensacola High School needs a feeder school.
And I don't deny that, but rezoning and doing some other things.
Because it would hurt, right now, you know, it hurts a lot of things with enrollment, just extracurricular activity banned.
And again, this isn't a one, this isn't a final thing, this is an idea, a concept, things would have to be worked out.
That would have to come back to the board, yeah.
Thanks for thinking outside the box. I thought, when I saw the Plan B, that we're talking about something different. And one thing I want to be sure of is that we're addressing the students that live in the Warrington community. And when you say a magnet school, I've had conversations over the years I've been on the board about GPA requirements and all those kind of things. So, you know, I, I'm not sure I want it to be a magnet, because I think that one of the reasons we've had issues with the charter school company that has been negotiating with this is because we have not been assured that they were going to take care of the students in that particular location. I would like to have some, I wrote down research, because the last time I did any research on K8s was a number of years ago, and I need to look at it again, because I know with K8s, there's also a lot of, can I say, cultural changes? You know, all the things that we offer at middle schools have to be offered at a K8, ban programs, sports, all of those things. And so, there's a cost involved. There's a cost involved in retrofitting an elementary school to have middle school capacity, et cetera. I mean, they've got capacity, but there might be some cosmetic things that have to be done to make that work. But I really do applaud your thought process in thinking outside the box and coming up with some ways that we can possibly be more efficient. I know that one of my principals has told me, one of my elementary school principals has told me for years, that if she could just keep her 6th graders, all the parents would be happier when they had to go to 7th, because they just still feel like their 6th graders are not mature enough to move on to that larger environment. So, I think if we think about that, but I just, you know, just kind of want to make sure that we do our due diligence on it. And the other thing I wanted to say about, because I thought you were, the Plan B was like if we decided that we're closing Warrington. I would like to recommend that we have some conversations in the Warrington community about what they think they'd like to see there. What kind of programs? What would their children like to do? What would interest them? What would bring them into the school? What would get the parent support? Because I think that's one of the things that, over the years, we may have lost their support, because we've not been able to give them a master plan. So, as we talk about these things, I think we need to have some conversations in that community to listen.
My first question is, since when did we think we can close Warrington? Because I was on a phone call with the superintendent. I had proposed a closing and reopening with just a 6th grade, and the person who was with the Department of Education, and I'm not exactly sure which one it was, told me, "I will not approve that. I will not let you close that school." So, I'm a little confused. Madam Attorney, has something happened differently?
Well, and when I was chair.
And I asked Madam Attorney.
I think far more will be revealed after Tuesday's meeting.
But that's, have you heard the same thing? "I will not let you close that school."
Would that be a discussion for tomorrow?
It can be. I'm just...
No, I mean, we can certainly discuss it now, but I have heard representations that plans that we are making for Warrington are not something that the state board is inclined to approve.
Okay.
Now, whether or not the school is going to close, I would say that the state board has made it abundantly clear, the one thing that we know is that the Escambia County School Board will not be operating it next year. So, what does that mean? We don't have a charter agreement with the charter company, consistent with the top plan, and those kids have to go somewhere. So, we will find out what the state board's thoughts are on where we are on Tuesday. Right now, it's a good bit of unknown. I think we can expect that the state board is going to establish the expectation that we will do what we agreed to do in the top plan, and that was to turn the school over to a charter company. But the question becomes, how does that happen when you don't have a party who is willing We've reached a point where...
I understand. You have no answers, and I don't either. Superintendent, you don't have an answer?
Well, the one thing I would like to point out is, the reason we're going to be talking about some of these topics today and tomorrow, is because one of the pressing matters here, which I will tell you is of great, great concern to me, is we have students right now that we have to take care of and make sure that they have a school for next year, a school assignment. So, part of the reason for some of the steps that we're looking at tomorrow is to position ourselves so that we can be nimble in going where we need to go. Because especially when you, if you, if we get into a rezoning issue, that's not a quick process. So, we have to make sure we're getting pieces in place so that we can do what we, what may be needed. But my big concern is, we have to have a good situation for our kids, any defined situation. And that's what is so pressing right now, is literally is the calendar. So, I just wanted to share those.
Mr. Chair, stop.
I've been asked if we could take a short recess, and we agree, we'll do 10 minutes.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Slaton was next.
Thank you, sir. All right, so, secondly, I do want to just speak on behalf of District 5. Yes, they tried to put a K8 at Melina Park Elementary, and the parents said no. They said, "You can't offer what my child can have at ransom or at, or his ward. There's no way that opportunities will be there for them." I noticed District 5 hasn't been mentioned for K8, which is kind of good for good. I mean, I don't, I don't know exactly, we're coming up with this as, this is good for students besides other people saying it. I've heard horror stories about K8s and opportunities that have been missed. I don't know how you're going to put the students into the same opportunities that they would have even at Bellevue or even Workman. They have fields, they have gyms, they have all the opportunities to do things middle school students like to do. They're only one grade away from being what we used to call junior high school. And I like junior high school. I didn't do away with it. So, that was a different world then. I'm not sure exactly why we did, but we did. So, I am not a proponent of K8s. The cost, opportunities that are lost to students, I don't see that it's going to do the things anytime soon for what you're looking for, that is going to help us at all. I certainly don't like the magnet idea of taking students and then automatically sending them to West Florida. I think you would have a great uprising for other parents who didn't send their students there, because pretty much you're talking about a magnet program that has to, parents are going to have to transport. That's going on now. It's costing us a lot of money, and you're going to cost us a lot more money in doing that. So, I'll wait and see what the department says. My first priority for this time right now is making a decision on what we're going to do for Warrington, and then going on from there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Adams?
Yeah, you know, I was chair before you, Paul, and I had a gentleman tell me that if I didn't give $100,000 to a for-profit charter school operator, he would close the school, okay? Superintendent knows that. I was out there at Salt Lake City and talked to Manny Diaz right there in the parking garage, and he told me, "I'm happy y'all voted to give that money to the company, because I would have had to close that school." And I don't think we can wait no more. I'm ready to carry out the constitutional authority of the board. We've got to take care of these kids. They've got to go somewhere. So, when we have that discussion tomorrow, I'm ready for that, and if we have to go into whatever legal system we got to do, we'll do it, but we got to carry out what we're supposed to do. And it's an option in state law to do... And it's an option in state law to do exactly what we might have to do tomorrow. And that's all I got to say on that.
Thank you, sir. Anything else on the Plan B? Saying none, we'll move into the last item. Mr. Superintendent, your SAAZAC report. Yes, sir. SAAZAC.